Was it June now about or?
We had our, we had our.
It was a beautiful day. Oh, yeah. I got an apple nap in the hammock and I thought it was just, it was lovely.
It was gorgeous. They're going with that.
Nice breeze.
Developmental operation. So then it.
Everybody did say.
But still, I mean, it looks really good. Colors are kind of dark.
You hear any more?
Excuse me.
I think we're gonna have a longer time tonight.
She's doing some research on it.
I know.
So we wanted to discuss.
That Jim Tron bait, that one is good. What do you think of Jim? What update he's playing? That Kathy says she still needs to do so. Homework on such a mission. So I'm gonna.
So when I came up there, I was like, I better throw that over there. I think Dan and I have.
Call order council meeting for May twenty-fourth. If everyone will stand for the pledge.
I pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for prayer.
Dear Lord, bless the decisions of this body, guide us tonight and the future as well. Amen.
Can we have a real call?
Councilman Lau?
Here.
Councilman McNeese?
Here.
Councilman Ravellette?
Here.
Councilman Stangle?
Here.
Councilman Grove?
Here.
Councilman Salters?
Here.
Councilman Gornau?
Present.
Mayor Yocum?
Here.
Adoption of the agenda?
Uh, we gotta update two things in the agenda. Uh, claims needs to change, uh, so the total reads one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. Just making sure that's correct.
Yes.
Um, and then we're gonna pull on new business, the shot Jim Tron tax abatement. Um, Kathy wants to look at some more things before she comes to us with an update there. So with those changes made, I make a motion that we approve the updated agenda.
And I'll second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to approve the agenda as amended.
Question?
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the agenda is adopted. Need approval to minutes for May tenth.
Uh, make a motion to approve the amendments from May tenth.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Question?
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes. And by a vote of seven to zero, those are approved. Petitions, memorials, remonstrances. I just wanna mention that our thoughts and prayers are with Dennis Fordus this evening. His wife had passed away today from an auto accident, so Dennis is on our police merit board and, uh, very, very active in our community. Anything else? Committee Chair reports.
Mark, do you wanna hit on our committee chair? I'm at that report.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Alright, so.
I'll talk about it from an RDC standard.
Okay, so we had, um, a meeting, uh, first of a couple that we're gonna have on a walkable, uh, city series and this one kinda focused on kinda crosswalks and getting to safer locations across, uh, busy intersections or very high traffic areas. Think it went really well, kinda did bridge off into other things that we're gonna discuss, uh, throughout the summer as we hold these meetings. Very productive, probably one of the more, uh, interactive meetings we've had as a group. Uh, we've got some things that we can work on that we can do initially. One of the big things is, uh, getting information out there, um, about safety with the crosswalks, making sure you slow down in those areas, stop for pedestrians, those things. Very simple, but sometimes people forget those things. But we've got some things that we can do right now, we've got some things that we can work on moving forward and obviously we're gonna keep working on this plan. Lot of great points, um, I think that we got to, especially where people congregate and people go. It was a very productive meeting, um, I think we all agree with that. Uh, it's Councilman Grove, Councilman McNeese, we're on that committee, so it was a good first step.
So, eh, to piggyback off that and go to RDC, uh, RDC, I brought up that meeting, uh, at, under miscellaneous, just to talk about, um, what we had discussed and, and, you know, in the RDC, we do a lot of paving, like, uh, the city itself does. Uh, and curb ramps, sidewalks, curbs, those things are mightily important to being able to, to, to do those things. Um, we even, one of the, one of the residents that lives in the downtown now, uh, talked over and over about a project that the RDC had mentioned a few different times and, and Cheryl pointed out that it was in during the stellar grant, you guys had talked about it as well. And that was creating a sidewalk on Willow Street to, from the back of the memorial to, uh, the Military Museum to kinda increase that traffic through there and it's a really good idea and I appreciate that. And the RDC, I asked them to put that back on the, on our, uh, agenda, so to speak, on how to maybe get that done and I think the rest of the board appreciated that. And one of the other things is JP, our engineer, was there and JP talked a lot about the sidewalk program, which is outstanding and, and Brad and, and Mayor's office does a good job of, of making that happen. And he talked about the cost and I don't, and I'll just break down some of the costs. He talked about panels, each panel of a sidewalk costs about a hundred and fifty dollars to do. And on a fifty-fifty project, that means a resident does seventy-five. But then he, then he explained at the, at the end, the curb ramps on the corners, those, those four pieces are about two thousand dollars. Uh, they jump up quite a bit and they don't ask the resident to do those and the mayor and, and the Board of Works really hunt for some money and, and find it and complete those projects on a, as needed. And I asked the RDC to, just like what we do with the tree board, we give them an additional appropriation of about ten thousand dollars to help them remove dangerous trees within the zone and plant trees. I asked if we could give, I asked our legal advisor and, and, which is Dave Roligan, and our, her, our financial people from Reedy, uh, if, if it was possible, if we could give some money to even JP's office or Brad's office to do projects as they see fit, maybe a small amount to help offset some of those within the zone. It has to meet the within the zone criteria, uh, but all with the design of improving infrastructure and walkability, both in the downtown area and, and within the zone. So, um, the RDC discussed that and they seemed very amicable about that. I think that's high on our list of things to do as well. So that was, that's a very long report.
The UEA had a special meeting before the city council meeting today. Uh, it was just to tie up a couple of loose ends, um, and, uh, you know, that went well. Really wasn't much going on when any, uh, any applicants for any help, uh, just need to get this done before next meeting and, um, basically that's it.
I attended a Pantheon board meeting, that's the operation boards. Um, they had an open house, about a hundred and twenty people turned out for, which I thought was a good turnout. Um, they are giving about thirty to forty tours a month, which, yeah, you gotta get people in to show them what it's doing. Uh, Thursday, the third, they're gonna have a co-working space for free, so you can go in and try that out, see what it's all about. And then, uh, starting in August, the Knox County CEO, the, um, will be housed at the Pantheon, so, uh, trying to use the space for all it's worth.
If not, report to city officers. And then public comment, which.
I didn't really come with anything prepared, but I did wanna respond to some of the comments, uh, that Mr. McNeese made. Uh, just this past month, KCDC has formed a new quality of place initiative. Uh, Shepard Dunn will be chairing that group and we've put together a group of, uh, what I would describe as not as old as your average KCDC member. Um, a lot of young folks that are gonna be representing different assets of the county are gonna come together with some fresh ideas on the types of amenities that our community could use. Um, and will be pursuing those. So I think some of the things that you mentioned specifically, uh, potentially a trail between the memorial and the museum grounds, those are the types of projects that I think we could partner with the city on as we go forward and, and identify those things. So I just wanna mention that.
That sounds great.
I'll be talking to you soon, man.
Hundred percent on that.
Any other public comment? If not, we'll go to old business, uh, first up is business updates.
Okay, uh, in talking with our businesses this week, uh, things are going really well. Um, I know I say that almost every week, but when you compare to where we're at in our county, surrounding counties and then other places that are similar to our size, things are going extremely well. Uh, now, as obviously caveat, that you see that something that we need to work on, obviously, is helping people find people to work. That's kinda the big one right now, but, uh, we've been able to kinda shore those things up and people have been able to work hard. Um, but that's something that we need to keep encouraging people that, hey, there's some jobs, there's some opportunities, some things that you can do if you're interested in it, to be able to go do those things. But other than that, when you look at it, um, I see some, some businesses are opening some new hours and they're doing some different things, so we're very lucky and a lot of that, like I said, has to do with us supporting our local businesses and kind of supporting each other and that's something that we've done since, um, not, we've always done. Uh, but we really kind of showed what kinda community we're, we were through the pandemic and that's why we're in the position we're in and we didn't see the loss of businesses that other communities in. If you look at some of them, I mean, there's some states that they're saying that they lost sixty percent of some of their businesses. I mean, it's huge and we're not seeing that here, uh, in Indiana as a whole and specifically in Southern Indiana and when you look at Knox County, I mean, there's some really good things that are happening here and it's everybody working together to make sure that, um, our businesses are doing well. So that's where we're at when we look at businesses here in the city of Vincent's.
County metrics update.
Uh, if you've looked at our numbers recently, they are low and the one the mayor and I continue to look at is that seven-day rolling positivity number. Uh, that's been, uh, I think right now at one point two, one point seven. Um, our last total last week was in between that number, so as long as that number stays low, we're gonna stay in the blue. Uh, we've had back-to-back days of zero new cases, that's always good to see. We've had on and off days of zero, so we've had a really good week last week, a really good week coming into this week, so we're in a really good spot and obviously, um, the CDC kinda changed some of their language and updated some of their protocol, uh, with, hey, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear the mask. The key thing that I know we've talked about, just be respectful of your neighbor. We use kinda that philosophy with businesses, if the business wants to keep it up, respect the business. And we've also talked to, if somebody's uncomfortable with you, it's a respect thing and we do encourage respecting the city and I think that, uh, we've done a very good job at that. Um, key thing to remember, the COVID clinic that was out at Community is now back in the Health Department, so that's one of the big changes that we have for us. Um, and then those that are twelve and up are eligible for the vaccine right now. So those are some of the big changes, things look good, uh, looks like another blue week and we look forward to a great summer of events.
New business, Vincent's Housing Authority. This is one of my favorite meetings.
This is your favorite one, isn't it?
It's gonna be her last time doing it.
Yes.
My last time.
Well, you can come back and give us money anytime you wish.
Do you have enough for a bio here?
Yeah, should be. Are you short one? I say I got some more. Um, I'm under Frederick, I'm the Executive Director at the Housing Authority. I am retiring at the end of June, so this will be my last check that I bring to the city in payment lieu taxes. But the Housing Authority will continue to pay their payment lieu taxes like we've paid since nineteen seventy-six, I think was when we started, um, keeping track of what we have been paying. And up until that time, we now have paid the city one million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand and eighty-eight dollars in payment lieu taxes. And basically what this is, for anybody who may not know, we are a tax-exempt entity, so we don't have to pay taxes, but instead we do pay the city what we can afford and the mayor has always been good to accept whatever we can afford to pay. Um, this year, or, yeah, the check I'm going to give you today is for thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. And I, before I give the mayor the check, I do wanna thank the mayor, I wanna thank the Police Department, Fire Department, the city, for everything that they have done for the Housing Authority for the last thirty-five years that I've been with the Housing Authority. It is greatly appreciated and a lot of things we couldn't have done without their help, so.
And we thank you very, very much for everything you've done since you've been in that position and make sure you train Jackie on how to.
Gotcha.
You gotta get a good picture, Mayor.
Linda, I didn't know you started room at twelve.
I did. I told Jiskie how my real age is, I said, I really would like not to have that in paper though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My last claps.
Thanks, Linda. Next up with the claims.
Okay, let's get this right. Uh, make a motion to pay claims in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to pay the claims in amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. Any question on claims? No question.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the claims are paid with the miscellaneous.
Alright, couple of cleanup items, uh, in talking with our clerk treasurer, uh, we'll look at kind of a council me, a special meeting, councils a whole, just to kinda go over, uh, budget stuff, probably towards the end of June when Kathy gets off of her vacation, she gave me those times to make sure that I don't schedule anything during that. Uh, this is just to let us know where we're at, how things look and if we have any questions, um, moving into kinda finalizing the budget. Uh, I know the mayor and his department heads have been working very hard to make sure that we got another good budget, uh, so this'll just give us kind of a brainstorming session to where we're at and, uh, expect that t- towards the end of the month in June.
Yes.
Um, Mayor, splash, does Splash Map open the Saturday?
We are getting everything in place.
Okay.
The main focus is the pool right now.
Okay. Um, and last new idea that I'll throw at you guys, um, I did talk with Councilman McNeese, Councilman Grove about this, I think this'll be good. Um, we're always really thankful about Burkhart when they do kinda the citywide cleanup and I know that's one thing that we look forward to and one of the things that continually comes up is always about city pride and making sure that our city looks clean. And I know it's something that we talk about constantly, but this is a situation where we're gonna not, not just talk about it, but put our money where our mouth is. So, starting after the Memorial Day weekend, uh, probably on Saturday, maybe on Sunday, uh, but for two hours for the next ten weeks, during that time period, I'm gonna ask you as a group of council, I know I've got commitments from a couple, uh, that we spend a couple hours every Saturday and we clean up a district at a time and then we just rotate district to district. Um, and we see how it goes. I think it'll go well, um, it's a good way for us to be out in the community, but it's one of those things that we continually hear about, about city pride, making sure things are cleaned up and I always love the way the city looks after, uh, the Burkhart cleanup. Use that kind of as inspiration, so we'll kinda do the council cleanup, see how this goes. Hopefully it's something that'll kinda take off, it'll not just be us, we'll encourage people to come with us if they want to. Um, we'll load it up and I'll take that, uh, trash away and we'll just clean up district by district over the summer and see how things go, okay? And I'll make sure to email you guys and let you know where we're at and when we're starting. Um, obviously we're all busy, so times will be, uh, different as that goes along, alright? But it'll be the first, we'll go District One the weekend after Memorial Day weekend. You, you're ready to go, right? I know you are, you're always ready. Um, so that's what I got for miscellaneous.
Anything else?
I do have a question, just a, a quick question and that was, uh, in regards to, uh, uh, maintenance at the parking lots of Sixth and Main. Uh, down here where we've got the, the really not, boy, we've spent some good money down there and it looks really good, uh, but I noticed as, uh, uh, in the last couple of weeks, uh, we've got weeds down there five or six foot high and I wasn't sure who was, who was doing that, if that was the city street department or if that, we had a special.
Typically it's me and the Parks Director and anybody else I can get in this office to help. And you guys are more than welcome to pull weeds anytime you see them.
So you're talking about the right side of the parking lot, right? The weed on the right side of it?
Yeah, it runs down that, uh, the space where the old, uh, what's it, was it the, uh, telephone company was there and then the, the other side?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's that island, there's islands in there.
But is that, is that owned by, that business on the right side?
No, that, that's, it's all, it should be all city, but I wasn't sure who, who really maintained that.
And just to give you an idea, myself, Paula, Cheryl, Ellen and Brad put out a hundred and seventy bags of mulch on the Riverwalk and City Hall during the landscape because, and JP, yeah, he helped a little bit, he showed up. But, and that's how a lot of stuff gets done because we know we're short employees with the budgets, so it takes everybody pitching in and. Anything else? If not, we'll go back to public comment. Then we'll move on to, for good, for the good of the order.
Uh, District One, Councilman Grove, what do you got?
Okay, my favorite time of the year, uh, to see what the Holter designed for the Main Street flowers. Uh, they have done, if, if, I think it's one of their best, uh, designs with the, uh, with the little trees and the plants and stuff, they do an awesome job. We sure have to find, uh, some kind of way to continue that. I know it's, it's the Holters' last year for doing that, but, uh, we've gotta, we gotta find a way to maintain that.
We have that covered.
That's awesome, cause it's, it's really, I mean, you pull down Main Street, you turn, you see those flowers and, and stuff, it really makes a huge difference.
In fact, I may see if you guys wanna take on a day a week of watering flowers next year.
Yeah, we'll do it. I don't really have the greens though, but I'll try.
So initially, that's how that happened, is the downtown merchants were, were watering those and Dan Osborne had actually taken that on for a long time and then enlisted different businesses along the way to do it each week. Um, is it, are we gonna go to that kind of a model to do, get it done?
We're gonna go to a city model and it'll probably fall under the Parks Department.
Love it.
That will be, I've talked to Doug about donating the equipment he uses.
Oh, that's awesome.
It'll be a lot easier.
Yeah.
I think it's two days a week, so, uh, uh, we'll get her done. And I, and I thank Doug and his wife, cause they're the ones that do it.
Yeah.
Twice a week for, but now I think that their oldest is graduating and it's time to.
Yeah, he said they're, they're gonna be doing some traveling and they're.
Traveling and I don't blame them, so.
And if you need us to water, I'll gladly volunteer, everyone up here.
Alright.
Yeah. Well, that's what our mom does with. Make sure, make sure we can drive the equipment, okay?
And I think last few, last few years, the Urban Enterprise Association has donated thousands of dollars to name four flowers up and down Main Street and on the Riverwalk and Second Street.
Yeah, and I think again, it falls into, the money's there, but the money's not everything, it's the manpower, which is what keeps that. Cause you, you can put, you can put twenty thousand dollars into flowers and they'll be dead in a week, so we don't want that to happen.
No.
Exactly, getting the money to plant those flowers is the easy part.
Yeah, yeah. That's mine.
Alright, that's good. District Two?
Uh, Fire Station Three got a much-needed roof, they've been working on it last couple of weeks, week and a half, it looks really good. Um, and along the, uh, the, uh, street department, man, the curbs, you can, you can really tell where the curbs are at now, it's all those right, uh, I, they were, no, not to park. Uh, I guess the lines are coming soon, is that, um, okay?
Yes.
Assume it's probably a two-step process, yeah? And, uh, shout out to Ann Pratt at the, uh, Red Skeleton Performing Arts Center. She was so diligent and just really took upon herself to get a, uh, historical marker at the Pantheon Theater and there was a, a ribbon cutting on May fourteenth, actually almost to the day of the hundred-year anniversary of the Pantheon opening. And, uh, they, it was a, it was a great, uh, ceremony, the, uh, lady from the Historical, uh, State Board was there and she, the, the comment she made was there's so many times that they've put up a historical marker for a building that was historical, but the building was no longer there. And she said, well, she's commended the community and the, the drive behind it to actually, for the building to still be there when they put a historical marker up. She was very impressed by, uh, her due diligence, so Ann really gives a, uh, gives a big shout out and it was a, uh, turn, great, great attendance and turnout for that ribbon cutting ceremony and unveiling of that, that plaque. Oh, and she also was gonna, I'll maybe, I don't wanna steal, you're gonna talk about the statue, the Red Skeleton statue. So the, uh, McCormick Foundation, uh, stepped up and, uh, there's gonna be a plaque, a, uh, statue of a red when he was a child, uh, selling newspapers there right in, in the pocket park. And, uh, they stepped forward and it's, it's, uh, it's gonna be, uh, they tied all that into the unveiling of the marker and it was just, it was really a, a special night, it was really, uh, yeah.
Alrighty. Councilman Stangle?
Yes, thank you. In District Three, there's a couple of things going on, um, we got some new construction just starting, actually just groundbreaking, uh, there at Sixth and Vigo. That's the new, um, Old National Bank. When they get that building completed, it will, uh, take, it will actually take the place of the, uh, um, the bank there at Third and Bus Room. Um, and I think they, I think they picked a great place for their new bank. And, um, at the hospital for the, uh, Charles Hedy, uh, new Charles Hedy wing, uh, anyway, they're gonna have grand opening and, um, it sounds like it's gonna be a good time, kinda live music and food, so, uh, that's all I got.
Councilman Ravellette?
I'm very impressed with the new billboard on Main Street, Old Chicago Pizza billboard, if you've been out that way, you come on the roundabout, come down to Main Street, a big billboard right there promoting downtown Vincent's. Of course, Old Chicago Pizza on top, a big arrow, big red arrow to the right, go downtown Vincent's, historic downtown Vincent's, and that I think is very beautiful and a great way to promote our city. And also, you mentioned the Splash Park, I know it will open soon, soon as we can, and, um, that'd be great to follow that area for, for District Four. But there was some concern expressed about some of the, um, traffic in that area, that cars or, and trucks are speeding through that area and they were concerned that when the Splash Park does open, that could create some problems with the children in that area, so, uh, uh, just wanted to pass that off.
And I think there used to be a speed bump there and as you enter that park and that will be going back in soon.
Good. It's like everybody's hitting on stuff that you're gonna hit later.
I've already, no, I've already been handling up this stuff.
Alright. Councilman Lau?
Well, shout out to the Knox County Chamber of Commerce, they held a, uh, job fair in the park and, uh, something desperately needed and, uh, we are, we are grateful for all our businesses here in Vincent's especially and, uh, their dedication to finding employees and, uh, as everybody's out and is aware, that, uh, there are a lot of people looking and they're doing a lot of different things and to, uh, pull out employees, so, uh, I encourage, uh, I encourage those people, those residents in Vincent's, if you do not have a job, go seek one, this is the best time and opportunity to find one because, uh, you're gonna find some opportunities that you might not have seen beforehand and, uh, uh, those are all good things. I encourage, uh, our, encourage our youth, uh, coming out of school, as school's letting out, it's a, it's a good time, pick up a summer job, pick up that first summer job, get a little experience. Uh, the employers right now are looking for you.
Alright. Thank you. Councilman McNeese, do you have anything left?
So I had, I had, I just kept crossing stuff out. I had five things here and, uh, one was Old National, uh, they made second, Joe, you, Paula and the group made fourth, so. Job well done, you guys going out there and doing that on the Riverwalk and it does look really nice. But first is to the Vincent's PD, um, I work for a financial institution in town and, and we had an incident of a person with some, clearly having mental health issues in a drive-through that we ended up having to call the Vincent's PD and they took the idea of in our custody is in our care to extreme lengths. They did a really, really nice job in front of a fishbowl of people watching the whole incident and everything else. Um, uh, person got out of the car just swinging and, uh, they did a heck of a lot better job than I would have ever done, but, so, uh, job well done to them. Next, uh, after that, Farmer's Market, and I see Shirley back there, it opens up this weekend, right? Please go visit the Farmer's Market and then also, uh, the street department has been out, uh, doing painting lines and my goodness, you can tell when they are doing it. It brightens up our community considerably, so job well done to them too, so thank you very much for that. That's all I got.
Hey, you had something, that's good. Very proud of you. Alright, so, uh, this past week, we had a bunch of graduations and they went off without a hitch and anybody that wanted to go was able to go. That's great. I mean, that's something that this class, I think, um, needed and especially with all the, uh, unknowns that were in the air. That's great. I mean, that's something that this class, I think, needed and especially with all the unknowns that were in the air as we headed into the school year, who thought that it would have been such a smooth ending that we all had. So it was nice to be able to see all those graduations, nice to see all those graduation parties. Those things are still going on. The big one, and I know I'm kind of a VCSC homer, but one of the bigger programs that you see happen over the summers or summer feeding program, kids that are eighteen and younger, they don't even have to be a VCSC student, just eighteen and younger, if they go out, they get a free lunch. And we serve around twenty thousand meals a year. The last couple of times we do it, last year the numbers were a lot higher, obviously, because of COVID. But usually traditionally in the years, you see it around twenty thousand. They get a good little meal. All they have to do is just show up at the places that we're having them. We've got it nineteen, nineteen seventy-two, Lincoln High School and all four of our elementaries. We try to make sure that they're spread out so it's easy for people to get access to those places. But it's a tremendous service that is provided for the community free of cost and it's nice to be able to have those type of things. So those are mine. Mayor?
Okay, I've got a whole list here. First up, I want to mention that we do have a large item drop-off date set as the fifth and the twelfth. And that's for city residents only. You will be asked for an ID when you go to drop stuff off at Republic. You mentioned walkability of the community. Last year before COVID, we had our plan in place to connect the Upper Riverwalk with the Lower Riverwalk. It's designed and everything, but then they took away the trap screen. They just come back and, and our comprehensive plan, our downtown plan, everything, it's, we've got those connections between the Riverwalk and the Military Museum in place. And now we're going to start moving forward with those now that those grant dollars are back. The pool. JR and Paula worked all weekend on the pool. Today is JR, Paula, Bryce Anderson, three Street Department employees are all out there working to make sure that this pool gets opened this Saturday, as well as Bryce's wife and my wife are out there this evening doing things. So Parks Director, I am doing background checks now on the applicants that we, that we received, so hopefully I can move forward with that soon. Worshong Avenue Project had a public hearing a week or so ago. It was a great public hearing. A lot of the residents out there showed up. They were all in support of this. Their only concern was what part of their property the city may be taking. And when they learned it was very little, very little, they weren't, they were all excited about it. So I'm glad to see that going forward. And July fourth, we will do the parade and fireworks on the fourth. I just signed a contract at Border Works this evening with a company to do our fireworks, so looking forward to that. And then a week from this Friday is Spring on Main.
On Fourth of July, do we, are we filling out the forms like we did before for people to be in the parade? I know I've gotten that question quite a bit. Okay.
I will send an email to anyone that have on the list that has participated in the past and then I'll push it out.
I, I assume that's that, we were just waiting for the okays and stuff and I just told them to call the office, but I knew that was going to be short until that came out.
And this year, as usual, we will recognize the, our veterans, but also medical staff, hospital, and those that dealt with COVID as well as emergency services will be recognized. And that's all I've got. Just need a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Don't anybody move.
Yeah, make sure you sign it because apparently we had like five documents that weren't properly signed.
That doesn't go over well with.